One.
Good evening and welcome to the Land Development Code Text Amendment Public Hearing. It's the first of two public hearings, so we won't be taking votes on any of the issues tonight. It is a hybrid meeting with commissioners both here and virtually appearing. So if we could have a roll call vote.
Cap?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
All right, thank you ma'am, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And to any of the commissioners, if, I've got a few screens to watch tonight, so you can do everything you can to flag me down if you want to speak. And with that, we will go to the first item, Mr. Moreta.
Good evening, commissioners. We have four items on the agenda tonight. The first two items are actually items that were continued from round two of last year, dealing with filing it for party, filing for oral argument, and also expiration on plan development, transportation network regulations. And we have two new ones dealing with establishing pre-submental conferences and, well, repurposing pre-submental conferences for this efficiency review meeting, and also changing the special land use hearing officers' review of land excavation items, and directing that to the board for the final decision. We have Israel Monsanto of our staff is going to walk through a PowerPoint. As you said, we're not anticipating or needing a vote for tonight. If there's any comments made tonight, it would be helpful in the sense that we could take those comments and integrate them into our work preparing for the May 20th hearing. We also have a consistency finding with the planning commission left to go. We just exited an outreach meeting, and we also did additional outreach as requested by the board for the first two items of this. We had an additional meeting, I believe it was back in January, February, as a follow-up to the continuance of the first two items on the agenda. So having said that, I believe we're ready to go tonight. I'll turn over to Israel, and he can walk through the PowerPoint for each item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services. I will share my screen to present the PowerPoint. Let me know if I need to swap the screen, which I believe I do.
Yes, sir, go ahead and swap it. Looks good, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Israel Monsanto Development Services. This presentation consists of the Land Development Code text amendments for round one of this year 2021. This is the first of two public hearings for this first round. We will present each code amendment and pause after each one for questions and comments. And Mr. Moreta stated, we have already conducted many meetings prior to this public hearing. In those meetings, the staff has presented and discussed the ongoing text amendments for this first round. The first outreach meeting was on January 27th and was conducted for the two Land Development Code items continued from last year, which were the oral argument party of record and plan development, general site plan, time expiration. The text amendments were presented then at the Board of County Commissioners workshop last March, as well as to the Planning Commission last Monday. These meetings have provided valuable information for county staff and has held vetting these regulations. The upcoming meetings after today's public hearing include the Planning Commission's regular meeting for their consistency finding on May 10th, and the second and final board public hearing, which where the text amendments will be adopted, that's on May 20th. So you already know, we have a total of four text amendments for this round. Two, the first two that you see on your screen were continued from previous year 2020, and then the next two sufficiency review meetings, and also the land excavation permits are the two new ones being added for this round. Land Development Code 200721, this is the text amendment dealing with the public testimony by a party of record. The purpose again is to allow public testimony by a party of record at the Board of County Commissioners land use meetings or rezoning applications without requiring the party of record to file a request for oral argument. With this amendment, parties of record would be permitted to provide testimony at the board land use without first having to fill and then file the request for oral argument. Anyone providing testimony before the Board of County Commissioners will still need to qualify as a party of record, and their testimony needs to be within the record of the hearing before the land use hearing officer, including the recommendation by that hearing officer. And this concludes this first item for this round. If you are available, if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, and we do have three speakers signed up, so we'll go to the three speakers and then the board. And the first speaker is Jake Kramer.
Commissioners, good evening. This is Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. I just wanted to convey that, well, first of all, thank you to staff, thank you to the county attorney's office and commissioners, several of you, for having meetings with those of us in the development community on this particular LDC amendment. Several of us had concerns that there were some inadvertent effects of the draft that was presented the last time you saw it. Those concerns, at least that I had, have been resolved. And so I think that this amendment now, you know, addresses those concerns again we brought up before the board last year. So I just want to thank staff for working with us on that, and I no longer have an objection to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kami Corbett?
Yes, Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700. I share Jake's thoughts. I think that this revised amendment does address all of the concerns that we raised. I really never had an objection to what you all were trying to accomplish, so I was happy to see that we were able to tweak the language and get it into a place where we can, the development community can support it, and we appreciate staff and all their hard work.
Thank you. Buddy Harwell?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Buddy Harwell here for Baum Florida and Gibson Ten. And I forgot to welcome Commissioner Cohen back. Hope you're feeling better, and I can't wait to meet with you. But being a victim of this policy ourselves down here, and we had issues Tuesday down there at the meeting, I'm all for removing this hurdle for all the citizens. I did want to point out, there was a couple of gentlemen that showed up Tuesday that did not, for another hearing, not one of ours, that did not do the oral arguments and didn't know anything about it, and reviewing some of the meetings, the EHM meetings, and I know the staff has a lot to do, but they have not been letting the citizens know after each hearing to remind them that they have to do the oral argument. So I'd like to see that put in effect until this gets pulled out of there. And Mr. Franklin was unable to attend tonight, and he supports this removal of this too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, that's all the speakers that we have on A1, and this close a public hearing. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm not going to take a lot of time tonight. I spoke at the workshop, I may speak again at the final hearing, but just to say, I appreciate that Mr. Kramer and Ms. Corbett have come to support this amendment. It's, this amendment is very important to me. It's something I've been trying to get done for many years before I got here. It's something that any citizen who ever tried to come speak to their elected officials about a zoning issue wishes that we would fix. So I again ask staff to send the commissioners the oral argument information packet, just so you could make sure that you understand what it is we're trying to change and see the intimidating legal language and red tape and rules and the whole hurdle that citizens have been contending with, just to come speak about an issue in their neighborhood that they're concerned about with their elected officials. And I'm hoping that at our final hearing, May 20th, we will finally be able to get this done. And I, thanks, many thanks to staff also for working, working hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other board members? It doesn't look like anyone else is requesting to speak at this time. I'd just like to say thank you to Commissioner Smith for being so diligent about putting this forward and for, I think, alerting us all in a special way. I mean, I think it was obvious to anybody who served on this board that this was a problem, but for really elucidating what kind of problem it was, and for really, over and over and over again, reminding us of difficulties when, when this process made it so complex as well. Commissioner White, I know that you were very attentive in doing that as well. So I think it's, it bodes well for a, I think, a process that can, you know, the, our citizens can actually start using in a more adequate way. And I'll say you drew my attention, Commissioner Smith, to actually looking through online. And it is so intimidating and incomprehensible what's there now. So we'll get that cleaned up, I hope, and move on here. Mr. Moreta, we don't have to take a vote or anything, so Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to turn over to Israel, and just to save time, we can just let him continue through the presentation, and entertain questions, and we can jump in if necessary, or we can bring it back to me, and then I'll turn it over to Israel every time, however you wish to proceed.
Go ahead. Well, that's fine, we can do that.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item. This is the time limit to approve plan developments, district, and general site plans. The purpose of this text amendment is to establish a time limit to approve plan development, general development plans, after rezoning approval by the Board of County Commissioners. This time limit expiration would apply only to the internal transportation network and external access points, as well as for any condition related to internal transportation network and external access points. Expiration of plan development, general site plans will rely upon site construction plans or an equivalent to be approved within five years or longer period of time, if approved by the Board of the effective date of the PD rezoning or last modification to the PD. The Board may approve a duration exceeding five years when supported by evidence that the characteristics of the property or the scope, scale, or anticipated timing or phasing of the project would make a longer duration more practical, or that is reasonable necessary to complete the project. Upon expiration of the certified PD plan, recertification of that general site plan shall require a minor modification to that plan development and will be evaluated for consistency with comprehensive plan and co-transportation regulations. There will be a one-year extension that will be permitted for PD general site plans. The time limit proposed by these text amendments would not apply to plan developments approved before date of May 20th this year, or to any plan development with a complete application pending as of that date. However, the proposed PD expiration provision would apply to any modifications to an otherwise extent plan development. And this concludes this item presentation.
Madam Chair, before we go to the speakers, I just wanted to add a couple of points that came up in some conversations we had this week, and will probably come up in the testimony. There was two points of, that were requested to be clarified by participants in discussions, and I think it really revolves around wanting some degree of certainty to the extent possible. And really, well, to say, what, what was requested to be added is that when the, if a PD expired, road network expired, it comes back and is evaluated by the board. There was a request to add language to that, that such reevaluation would take into account equity, or would otherwise be fundamentally unfair to change the existing transportation network. So in other words, they want, the request is that they want some language added that recognizes that if you have projects that are built and developed and ongoing, that there are some considerations given to the, to the portion of the project that's been developed, and, you know, the terms that they were used were, that it was an equitable decision in light of the development that took place preceding the expiration. I, my thought is that the actions the board would take will always be fair and equitable, and I was not opposed to raising that point with you today, and if comfortable, would add that to the, to the language on the, for the adoption hearing. The other point of clarification that was requested is that for PDs that were approved prior to this and were not subject to the expiration, that modifications to the PD, the way it's written right now is, any modification to the PD would, would bring it into the realm of bringing the transportation network to potentially be expired. And the request was that, that that be clarified to be modifications that would affect the internal network, transportation network, external access points, and conditions relating to those access points. So in the example that was given is, a hotel comes in and adds, requests to add one more hotel room, which, so you might remember, we had, the thought was that that shouldn't generate a expiration of the, of the access points. Again, these are for PDs that are, that are pre-existing this regulation. So I also thought that that was a reasonable request, and would raise that today, and so would those, I would recommend those two changes to this, subject to the board's comfort would be bringing back that, that language at the second public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll go this public hearing, and we'll go to our, our speakers, and then we can talk about any issues raised. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Chair. Again, Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller. Again, on this one, commissioners, I think this is an example of how the process is supposed to work and the reason we have these public hearings. You know, some in the development community, we didn't necessarily understand exactly what was trying to be accomplished originally when this came before you last year. And I think we've had really good conversations. Staff really rolled up their sleeves and worked with us. You know, we looked together at different jurisdictions to try to determine some best practices. And I think with, with the two requests that Mr. Gormley just described, I think that, you know, again, I would certainly be in support if this is made with those two changes. And again, the first change would just be to request that, that equity be considered if, when there is a reevaluation of the internal transportation network. In other words, to look at the applicant's investment in the project and their timeliness and their good faith, work with staff and the board to implement the regulations to date. And the second request is just that if you have a very minor modification to rezoning that's unrelated to transportation, that that not trigger suddenly expiration date to the PD. So again, thank you, staff, for working with us, and commissioners, with, you know, with those two changes, I would be in support of this.
Thank you. Kami Corbett?
Yes, Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson again, and I will not take up a lot of time. I'll just say that I agree with Jake and really appreciate staff's work and would be in support of the amendment with the requested changes. And also, just like to note, Madam Chair, my office may have signed me up for the other plan, our code amendments tonight, and I will not be speaking on any other code amendments this evening. But if you see my name, you can remove it, have my permission to remove it.
Great, thank you. Buddy Harwell?
Good evening, Buddy Harwell again. I, I do approve of this, and I think there needs to be some type of a limit. I think we can all agree that probably Sims Road is going to be the poster child for this, I believe, if I read it right, because I remember time after time, with rezonings going down there, commissioners, longtime commissioners always stating, you know, we had nothing to do with, that this was, you know, rezoned years ago. So, you know, you know, the time changes, I mean, we, traffic changes, roads changes. So, you know, hopefully you pass this and make it a better place to go. And, and again, Mr. Franklin agrees and wants to go on that record. Thanks.
And Gordon Schiff?
Good evening, commissioners. Gordon Schiff with Gordon J. Schiff PA. And I also am arising to compliment all the efforts to improve upon the original draft. This certainly is an improvement from what was originally drafted, including the two additional points that were raised by Mr. Gormley and others tonight. I do, I do just want to note for the record, you know, you're dealing with the issue of property rights, and I know you all understand that, and sometimes you're dealing with the issue of vested rights, but, and you can't predict everything, and certainly there's the, the risk of unintended consequences, but want to make sure that, you know, from viewing this, this is definitely an improvement over what was originally presented, and appreciate all the efforts that have been made by staff and others, including the two additional points tonight.
Thank you. And with that, we will close a public hearing portion, and if, we have a few commissioners that would like to speak, I'll recognize, I hope I didn't miss you last time. Commissioner Overman, first.
Thank you. And actually, my only comment last time is, here's a good example of good government. I'm glad we're on this trend. But that being said, about this particular item, I am very glad to see this move forward. We've had many years of dealing with past policies that, that no longer really work well in our current level of growth and, and development. So having a timeline to work within to allow for designs to get implemented with current comprehensive planning guidelines considered, I think is a wise course of action. I'm trying to make sure I'm clear on this Table 5.1 regarding changes in approved general There's administrative modification, minor modification, and major modification that are, that are outlined. If I could ask for some interpretation of some of this, when it is an issue that we've heard now needs to be considered when it comes to equity, how is that measured?
Mr. Gormley?
I think, Mr. Gormley, I may need your assistance in this particular issue.
So the table, and the table that's in the amendment is actually existing language in the code. So the, so the area where the, where the equity would, was requested to be added is under new sub-paragraph C, which has got underlined text. The paragraph that starts with, "Upon expiration, recertification of the general development plan shall require minor modification." And Commissioner Overman, that does tie into the chart that you identified, does have minor modifications, and that, those are the PRS, public hearings that come straight to the board. So the, the proposal is that that re-establishment of the roadway network would be through a minor modification. The proposed text does have that the review would be to re-evaluate the internal transportation network, consistent with then-current comprehensive plan and code requirements, and that part would not change. The, the request is that, that the, that it be explicit that equity be included, and say it's, it's a, included in the standard that gets applied to the, to that review. In my view, that doesn't change the intent of the amendment, and frankly, it's still going to be subject to the policies that are in effect. And I don't have any feeling, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the language, because I think it's something that would be done anyway as a matter of course, that'd be treated fairly and equitably. So, but that's, that's where that language was requested to be added, is in the re-evaluation of the re-establishment of the roadway network, consistent with current comprehensive plan and code requirements, that that decision would be, would, would avoid some result that's unjust or otherwise be fundamentally unfair.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Overman?
It did. It's just always interesting what some folks feel is fair and others don't. So I'm trying to figure out what the measuring stick will be, in order to create clarity in the language, so that it's, to avoid any additional issues associated with that, that component. So I'm, I'm fine with it, as long as when we finally get a document that actually includes a definition of how that equity is determined, that it's very clear for both the landowner and for the citizens in the area, when it's, when the, the plan development is actually approved. And that's where, you know, our role has to, to really be the defining line at some point in time, and then, but we, we do need to make sure that we're, we're very clear when it comes to how that's defined. So thank you very much.
And as a suggestion, perhaps that, that language could be incorporated as a intent, intent statement, rather than a, measuring that is fairly challenging, but maybe it's, it's added as a, as an intent statement, is that the intent is, is to do that re-evaluation in a fair and equitable manner, and avoid any unjust or fundamentally unfair results. It doesn't, it doesn't, fairness as a regulatory tool is, is, I think, difficult to quantify. Point's well taken, you know, fairness is in the eye of the beholder in some instances. But we still would, would have in there that it's subject to the policies, comprehensive plan and regulations, and that could be added as a, as an intent statement, if that would be possible.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my only concern, is how it actually ends up being worded. We need to make sure that our legal and, you know, the community's legal is, is clear what, what the, what the measuring sticks are when it comes to fairness, and so that's why I asked. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman touched on most of the issues that I have. Mr. Gormley, do you want to take a shot at just, just drafting something between now and the, the final public hearing?
Yes, sir.
And just run it by the commissioners and briefings?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll kind of have an idea of where we are heading into the final public hearing, so.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Right, I was thinking we could see a strike through and underline, and I noticed that in the previous one where they did, where you all did make a second round of changes based on the input from the development community, we could see a double underline and a double strike through to indicate this second round of changes.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would, I would think if we could see that, we would see the evolution of this thing. I will also note that, to some of the comments that were made, this is, this, this, just to limit expectations, this only affects the internal network and the access points. So, I mean, I have heard a lot of people wish, and I want to make clear to the public, that this is not saying there's a time limit on PDs, and we sunset. that this is not saying there's a time limit on PDs and we sunset PDs, which, you know, in my view, might be worth exploring someday with some of the stuff that we've been stuck with, with PDs that were approved 20 years ago and are way out of whack with what we would do today in terms of wetland setbacks even or different kinds of rules and, and considerations we have, have today. But this is not that. This is just, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
The internal network and the access points of a PD is all that it would say would be re-reviewed after a certain amount of time, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, you know, in terms of equity, it may cost someone to move those access points or it may be more or less expensive to do. And, and I wouldn't want this to say there would be no, no cost in that final, you know, re-review and what, what might have to change in your plan.
And I think, I think the scenario that is, that was, is communicated and may be of mind is if you have a project that gets partially constructed, it, it gets to the point where the rest of it expires and then you've got some existing development that need, the re-evaluation of the roadway network and access points is going to interplay with built already existing development and roads. I believe that's the scenario that was really causing the, the sensitivity in the comments that we heard.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I, I see.
Thank you. And I think that is, everyone, I'd just like to say, I think it's been really good discussion on these. I'd like to thank Mr. Kramer and Ms. Corbett for coming forward early and being open to discussion and, and their participation. And with that, I guess we will go back to the next A3 with Israel.
Yes, thank you Commissioners. The next item is Land Development Code 210416. This is create a sufficiency review meeting. This is to repurpose the mandated pre-application submitted conferences to a mandated meeting post-application submitted. Current pre-application submitted meetings are mandated, however, these are based generally on draft materials that often change prior to formal applications submitted. A mandated meeting would be placed in time of the review process, which will be after applications submitted, where staff comments have the greatest benefit to the applicant and to the process. This will allow staff and applicant communication based on more refined application materials. This code, this code amendment will maintain pre-application meetings upon request and they will not be mandatory anymore. And we are finished with the slide presentation.
Thank you. So, this is a public hearing and Ms. Corbett was, said she no longer needed to speak to these second items and, or these further items. And with that, let me see, I don't see a, a single board member here to speak. So, Mr. Monsanto, we can move to the next item.
Thank you Commissioners. The next and final item is Land 210541, special use land excavation permits review and approval procedure. The purpose of this amendment is to change the review procedure of land excavation special use permit. The amendment would modify the review process for these special use permits, which would require approval by the Board of County Commissioners instead of the land use hearing officer, Luhoe. Land Development Code Section 61154 will make references to part of the Land Development Code 100600, which is the resounding personal appearance procedures for the review process of land excavation and special use permits. And these permits again will be presented at the Board of County Commissioners land use meetings and no to, in front of the land use hearing officer anymore. And this concludes this presentation.
Thank you. And we have one person sign for this A4 and that's Buddy Harwell. Mr. Harwell?
Good afternoon again Buddy Harwell, Palm, Florida. I'm sure it's not going to be no surprise, but I wholeheartedly support this amendment. I just felt it was too much just for one non-elective official to make that big of a decision that impacts an area with the, the trucks, the dirt, the noise and until you live by one of them, you, you won't understand it. I would like to see it go one step farther and limit, maybe like a five mile area. Once one pit gets there, another one can't come in within five miles to, you know, just kind of save the community a little bit more. Like I say, we have five in a two mile area. Since I've moved here in 2004, there's always been a pit open in this area. So, hopefully we can get them limited and I appreciate your cooperation with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I see Commissioner Overman's hand is raised. You're recognized?
Thank you Chair, I appreciate it. And, and I really appreciate the language in this document because it does make it clear, you know, what mitigated impacts need to be considered as part of it. So, it makes it more clear about how we measure the risks associated to the community as a whole, as well as the opportunity to allow for land excavation where, where appropriate. I think there is some, some merit to Mr. Harwell's comment about the, having that, many of them within a vicinity, although I don't, I don't know whether or not that is something the board would consider because of the impact it might actually have on fresh water access for residents in, in the area. But I, I don't know how that would be measured in this application process prior to having it come to the board. Can anyone answer that question? For approval.
Mr. Gormley?
Yes, Commissioners, well, I think we'll have some more information for you at the next land use meeting. This, this application kind of dovetails into a rezoning that you heard, a major modification that you heard on Tuesday. The hydrological analysis, there are protections in the code to make sure that the clay confining layer of the aquifer is not breached and currently has a 10-foot, the, the excavation can't be more than 10 feet from that confining layer. There are some, there's language in the operating permit side that provides for monitoring of groundwater even to the extent of having wells, test wells around the project to monitor the, the groundwater level. So, there are, that level of, of hydrological analysis is currently in the operating permit side and we have county hydrologists who, who will engage on that. But we will come back at the land use meeting with more detailed information on what goes on with the operating permit side of it. Because the, the special use is the process that says whether yes or no for you can have this use in this location with these type of characteristics, setback, fencing, dealing with the haul route. And then the, the, the water science part of it comes at the operating permit stage.
Well, that's, that doesn't address my concerns about the impact. That's like saying it's okay to do this as long as we don't crash into a wall because we don't have a steering wheel. That's a bad example, I'm sorry. But, but, but once the permit is issued, if, if it would create a environmental hazard or a health hazard, we're already, that horse is out of barn, right?
Well, the.
Would that be mandated in the operating?
In the operating permit, yes. The operating permit is, the current structure is the operating permit is, is where that, that more detailed operational elements get, get reviewed and, and safeguarded to make sure that the, the operation itself doesn't, doesn't have a negative environmental impact. So, two things required to do land excavation, an approved special use and an approved operating permit. So, if you have one but not the, well, the operating permit follows the, the special use, but the granting of the special use itself doesn't allow the land excavation operation to commence. It's, the operating permit is the, is the necessary action before the excavation can, can commence.
Okay, so, but the operation, the operating permit is done, is approved administratively or is that brought back to the board as well?
Currently, it's an administrative permit. And, and this amendment does not change that structure as currently drafted.
If, if that's the board's pleasure.
Commissioner White, you're recognized?
Thank you Madam Chair. This is my item, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this, I guess I don't understand Commissioner Overman's questions, but this just simply takes it out of the administrative realm and into the board's realm. Maybe the question was whether or not it would apply retroactively and we, we know that would not be the case. Or, or retroactively is not the right term, but for any pending case, it would not apply. But from the moment it's enacted, looking forward, those would come to the board for a final vote and approval.
Correct. Those, those, those that go to the land use hearing officer today would no longer go that, they would go, come directly to the board for the public hearing and decision by the board.
So, we're, we're, just, I probably should have paid a little more, a little closer attention to Commissioner Overman's questions, but I mean, to, to be clear, I mean, this simply just, just takes it from being an administrative process to a legislative process.
Yes, from, from the, from the hearing officer to, to the board.
Right, okay.
And I don't see anybody else, but I would say, Commissioner Overman, I think I understood what you were referring to and I think Mr. Harwell did raise good points. I think this is the first place we go is to put it in the hands of this board. In fact, I actually, from what I knew even 30 years ago with the activists in this county, I think of Cam Oberting, and I wasn't familiar with the process, but it just kind of shocks me that this was out of the hands of the board and in Luhoe's hands to do this. So, I very much am appreciative, Commissioner White, that you raised this and I think this is the first step. And then as to your concerns and probably Mr. Harwell's and probably others, I just want to let you know that you're not alone, but I think this is right now, the first step for this. And then I think in the future, we might be able to look at other, other issues as to how this is, the, the rules for this, the code for this and maybe able to, there, there might be other things that we want to do to alter that. But I think this is the, a giant first step. In fact, just the way that we can proceed moving forward. So, with that, I don't see any other further, Commissioner Myers? Okay, I see no further discussion, I don't think by anyone, we don't have to take any votes, so we're adjourned?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thanks everyone. And thank you Commissioner White for bringing this forward.
Thank you for your support.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay.
Good night. Thank you very much for joining, we'll be ending the meeting.